Busy place today.
Popular place.
Wow, democracy.
Yes, at work.
Yes.
In all exchange forms.
I did, I got, um, I turned up, it said it was seventy point five degrees, I just turned up to seventy-two.
Sixty-five, doesn't it?
Yeah.
The April seventeenth meeting of the Eden Prairie City Council will now come to order, all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with the routine of justice for all.
Prior to the start of each council meeting, which is generally the first and the third Tuesdays of the month, we provide an opportunity for residents to address the council during an open podium period of time. This portion of the meeting is from approximately six thirty-five to six fifty-five. If you're interested in addressing the council at this time, please contact the city manager's office by noon of the meeting date, nine four nine eight four one two, with your name, your phone number, and the subject matter you wish to discuss. If time permits, after scheduled speakers are finished, the floor can go to anybody in the audience that wants to speak. Open podium is not recorded or televised. Again, if you have any questions, contact the city manager's office. We have a number of proclamations and presentations today. The first thing is commendation awards to civilian responders, Mr. Getcho.
Mayor, I will turn this over to Police Chief Demann.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor, council members. From time to time, as you know, I have the opportunity to come before you and share with you some pretty amazing stories about civilians working with our first responders to help those in need. And tonight I have such a story that I want to share. And you're familiar with this story. I'm going to bring you back to January twenty-second, when I put out a text message to all of you regarding the fact that we were closing Highway Five because of a horrific crash. And tonight you're going to meet some of those individuals that stepped up to the plate and put themselves at risk to help their fellow citizens and then also work with our first responders. So in a moment, I'll bring them up. I'm going to read the award, and then I've got some letters and some hardware we're going to give out. And Mayor, if you would like to come down at that point, we can take a quick picture and move on. So at this time, can I have Dr. Rosa Sime come up? Shane Cahy, Jody Lanham, Chloe Lanham, Lucia Dugan, and Emma Mayer? If I can have you guys come up and just come alongside me. All right. On the morning of January twenty-second, twenty eighteen, an SUV traveling eastbound on Highway Five in heavy snow and limited visibility was struck by a westbound car that had crossed the median. The eastbound vehicle held a mother and her three children, ages eight, five, and three. There was only one person in the westbound vehicle. Before emergency personnel arrived on the scene, several vehicles stopped to help the victims. Retired emergency medicine Dr. Rosa Sime made contact with all of the people involved in the crash in order to triage them and then direct other citizens in administering emergency care for the victims. She also provided critical information to the responding emergency personnel on the status of each victim. Shane Cahy, a firefighter with the Maple Lake Fire Department, stopped to help and was directed by Dr. Sime to stabilize the neck and airway of the unconscious driver in the westbound vehicle. Doing so allowed the driver to start breathing again. Mr. Cahy stayed on the scene assisting with the injured driver for an hour. Jody Lanham was driving with her daughter Chloe and friends Lucia Dugan and Emma Mayer when they came upon the accident. Mrs. Lanham offered to take the uninjured eight-year-old from the eastbound vehicle into her own car to keep him safe and warm. She and the three girls stayed at the scene for nearly an hour, distracting the boy by talking and playing games with him inside the car. The mother in the eastbound vehicle sustained multiple injuries, including two broken hands. The five-year-old had significant facial lacerations requiring stitches, and the three-year-old suffered a concussion. All three were transported by ambulance to the hospital. This was a horrific crash that had a dramatic impact on many people. Thanks to the good Samaritans who stopped to help, the victims were cared for immediately. On behalf of a grateful community and Police Department, I hereby award the Eden Prairie Police Department's Commendation Award to Dr. Rosa Sime and Shane Cahy and the Department's Letter of Recognition to Jody Lanham, Chloe Lanham, Lucia Dugan, and Emma Mayer. Congratulations, guys.
Well, thank you to those volunteers, those Samaritans. It just kind of makes me get all choked up that they did such a wonderful thing. So thank you. Hennepin County Commissioners are here tonight to tell us what is happening with the county. And this is sort of an annual thing that they do for us. Commissioner Callison and Commissioner Gattell, are you going to tag-team it, or are you each going to?
We are. We're going to be up here at the same time and sharing duties. So Jen Callison, my district is the northern third of Eden Prairie, and Eden Prairie is, I think, one of four cities that happens to have two county commissioners. So Commissioner Gattell has the southern two-thirds. And I thought I would give sort of a general update. Commissioner Gattell has some information about projects specific to Eden Prairie, and then we're happy to take your questions and comments. And my update is really by way of explaining some of the materials that have been handed out to you. I included the budget book from two thousand and eighteen, in case anybody wants more detail on the county budget. But I'm going to start with what looks like a little bookmark that talks about Hennepin workforce data. In the past, I've spoken about the changes in the county workforce, the aging of the county workforce, the challenges we have recruiting, the same as other companies in the Twin Cities. And I thought this might be of interest to you. We have about nine thousand total employees at the county. Twenty-eight percent of those are people of color, and we've made a conscious effort to diversify the county workforce. Sixty-two percent are female. If you look on this, you'll see that the baby boomers are beginning to fade from the scene ever so slowly, being replaced by the Gen Xers, the Gen Ys, and the Gen Xs, or the Gen Zs. And you will see how that plays out in terms of experience, because in the next five years we will see that fifty-six percent of our directors are eligible to retire. In the next ten years, sixty-two percent. So we've got a large transfer of knowledge that we're going to have to make sure happens at Hennepin County. And then on the back is some information about turnover and hiring and leadership. So to say, I thought this would just help provide you some detail that might be of interest. The next item is our state legislative priorities and platform. And the first six items are our priorities. I would call your attention really to the first one, which is the Regional Medical Examiner's Facility. I've also mentioned that to you in the past. Our facility is located downtown. It's a small building. It's inconveniently located, and demand for services has increased. We have a regional medical examiner's facility. We provide services for Scott and Dakota Counties. And I think across the state, you will see fewer medical examiner facilities providing services for more counties. So we know that we need a better facility. We've identified land in the county homeschool, so near Eden Prairie in Minnetaka, and we're asking for bonding from the state. The request is for twenty-six million dollars. That's half the cost of that facility. So we're hopeful that the legislature will smile on us on this session. And one of the issues we're dealing with in the county is opioids, and one of the reasons why the medical examiner's facility is busier than it has been in the past. So I also brought along with you a summary of our efforts in the area of opioids. It's got some statistics about the number of deaths that we are seeing and anticipating. But I think more importantly is the fact that we understand at Hennepin County that this is a public health issue. So you hear about Narcan and Aloxone, and certainly it's important to treat people when there is an overdose. But prevention is important, treatment is important, and really making sure that our policies are harmonized throughout the county is important. So we also have just today announced that we have moved somebody into the position of opioid coordinator in Hennepin County to make sure that the different silos of the county are working together. Then the last thing I brought along is information about our proposal to include residential organic recycling, some business as well, but I think more importantly for your residents will be the residential component. We've talked about this in the past. We know it's important to residents that they have the option for organics. We also know the state has changed some of those requirements. And so staff is looking at changing the ordinance. Hopefully, your staff is aware of that. Not to require organics recycling, but to encourage people to do that by giving them it as an option. This is the time when we're drafting that ordinance, so if it's something you've got comments on, concerns, suggestions, this is the right time to get hold of us. I included a recycling guide talking about all the things that can be recycled as organics. It's an amazing number of items. I've done commercial organics recycling at my house for ten years. Lots of times, folks are concerned about another truck driving down their roads, and my service takes the material in a bag that they provide me. I put it in my trash can, gets hauled away with my trash, is sorted at the transfer facility, and there's not an extra truck. So there are different ways of doing this. We're really looking to provide options to people, hoping that they will find it a good way to be environmental stewards in Hennepin County. So those are the updates that I brought along. I will slide over so Commissioner Gattell can speak with you, and then we're both available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, I get to talk about the great projects that are going to be going on here in Eden Prairie. First of all, Cassa Four, Eden Prairie Road, proposed provisional bridge replacement project. It's in the twenty nineteen CIP, so that'll be coming down the road. Cassa Four, Eden Prairie at Westgate Drive, a pedestrian improvement's much needed. Anticipated construction is twenty twenty. And then Cassa Sixty-One, Flying Cloud Drive, I think we all know about this, the reconstruction. And it's beginning this spring here, if spring ever comes, in twenty eighteen. And that overlaps, you know, into the district. The other thing that's a really big deal, I think, for a lot of people, and I was able to go to one of the open houses, is the Eden Prairie Library. So it's undergoing renovation project that will require a full closure for the nine months. The library is located at five sixty-five Eden Prairie Drive in Eden Prairie. It is approximately five fifty-three thousand nine hundred gross square foot library situated on a four-point-four acre surface site with a surface parking of a hundred and eighty-five vehicles. Due to the extent of the interior and exterior construction, including the parking lot resurfacing, the need for full closure is justified. The closure period allows for more condensed, cost-effective, and safe product, project delivery, rather than trying to do it in multiple phases with people inside the building. So I know we've gotten a lot of questions about that. Project scope is to update the library to better serve current future populations. There's a lot of building code deficiencies, not enough restrooms, size and layout. Accessibility code needs to be met for that. The exterior and interior issues, we've got an aging parking surface. Have you been over there where it dips and everything? There needs to be complete replacement of the electrical and the HVAC system. There's ice buildup and drainage concerns around the entire building and slow erosion. And the staff efficiencies are going to be addressed. There's some poor workflow going on and staff issues with that. So we have multiple service desks, and that doesn't support the service model that we're doing. But there'll also be an opportunity for some enhancements, and that's with some of the discussion at some of the open houses, for the patrons to supporting that. Like improved early learning space for children's and families, collaborative spaces for learners of all ages, additional study spaces for patrons of all ages, hands-on learning, including technology. If possible, improved outdoor spaces to enhance the community and extend the library space for patron use, so he could go outside and read a book. Be great. So, thank you.
Thank you for that overview. There are a couple of questions that I have. And I brought this up with one of the librarians. A lot of people use the book ordering service online and pick up their books. Will there be a place for us to pick up books? And we would be willing to take city space to create a pickup spot.
I have not heard. I know that at Ridgedale, and that library is closed currently, it is possible to go in and there's a secured room and pick up your reserves. I think it's been very successful. We can check. I would expect the county would be open to that possibility.
Yeah, just let them know that we're willing to help in whatever way we can, because it's a great resource for the community. And then I wanted to ask about recycling and organics and all recycling. I think this is probably the experience of many, many people in Eden Prairie. We find that our recycling bin is full to the brim after two weeks, and our regular garbage is not even a quarter of the way up. What efforts are being made to try to get retailers to reduce the amount of packaging? Because an awful lot can be recycled that's packaging, but is it even necessary to have, you know, a box this big for a product that's this big?
I can't say there's much being done at the county level, because that's really more of a national issue or statewide issue.
Right, right. But I meant more for advocacy or awareness of it.
So we, up until this year, we had the Solid Waste Management Coordinating Board, which was a consortium, if you will, or joint powers of most of suburban counties. That has gone away, and we're focused on more smaller unions between a couple of counties. It would have focused on that sort of issue. And so I think you've identified an appropriate gap with the move away from the coordinating board. What I would say is that in terms of the quantity or the capacity, that may be up to individual hauler and the device that they provide to you, the card or whatever to put items in. I know, in my experience, we have every other week pickup of recycling, but the container's bigger than my trash container, so it rarely fills. And the organics has pulled a lot of stuff out of my trash, so I have the smallest possible trash pickup now. So that's not a very good answer, but it's probably within the purview of what the county can control.
Yeah, okay. All right, any other questions?
I do have a question about the library. So many people use the computers in the library. Are you going, I know there's another Hennepin County building across the way. Are you making any effort to take those computers and have someplace where people can still go to use the public computers, or they're going to have to go to a whole nother town? My understanding is those computers are busy an awful lot of the time. And, you know, especially with some people that are newer to the area, newer to the country, you know, using them. And is anything being done to fill that gap for the nine months, especially given you've got another Hennepin County building very close?
Again, again, we haven't talked to the director of the libraries, but we'll bring that, especially if we're looking at spaces for the pickup. I'm not sure if there's any possibility of coordination or not, but we haven't discussed that yet.
Yeah, well, the pickup is one, but then it's also the computer use, and obviously would have to have somebody there, a staff member, to do it. But it seems like a very long time for a whole section of the community. I knew they do after-school homework help and their and such as well. You know, maybe that could be coming into something city, but you do have a building real close that could pick up a few of these things.
I think the message you're probably getting is this is really an important community resource, and we want to do everything we can to have some of the essential functions still operating.
Councilwoman Nelson, so as I say, Ridgedale has been shut down for, it'll be almost a year that it's shut down. We did not replace that computer usage anyplace else in the community. I actually don't recall anybody raising it, although it's certainly a legitimate point. I think we've tried to direct people to other libraries that are nearby, because it's tough to set up those computers, tough to monitor them, tough to replicate that service. But as Commissioner Gattell says, we can bring that back. The library surprises us sometimes with their creativity, but I am doubtful that you'll see anything of that sort.
Okay. All right, thank you very much for coming, and thank you for the great job you both do. Thanks. The next item is a donation from the School of Rock. Is Mr. Luthammer here?
Mayor, I can cover that. Mr. Luthammer is checking on the audio from the building. But we do have in front of us a thousand-dollar donation from the School of Rock in Eden Prairie. I think everyone's familiar with the School of Rock throughout the country. And they have donated a thousand dollars toward our City of Eden Prairie Kid Stock Event. So the action is to adopt a resolution accepting that donation.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you to the School of Rock and how appropriate that it's being used for our music program. I love it. Okay, the next item in this section of the meeting is a proclamation for Arbor Day, and this is something we've participated in for a long, long time. I've been reading. This is the thirteenth and last one of these that I will read.
Lucky thirteen.
Whereas in eighteen seventy-two, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas this holiday, called Arbor Day, was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees. And whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world. And whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products. And whereas trees, whenever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. And whereas Eden Prairie has been recognized as a Tree City USA by the National Arbor Day Foundation and desires to continue its tree stewardship and tree planting ways, now therefore I Nancy Tira Lukens, Mayor of the City of Eden Prairie, Minnesota, do hereby proclaim April twenty-eighth, twenty eighteen, as Arbor Day in the City of Eden Prairie, and urge all citizens to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands and to support our city's urban forestry program. And I further urge all citizens to plant trees, to gladden the hearts, and promote the well-being of present and future generations. Do we need a motion to approve that?
We do not.
Okay. All right, so Arbor Day is coming up, and we're going to have some events at our park system. Not to put you on the spot, Mr. Luthammer, but do you have anything you want to say about that?
Yes, this is actually our thirty-sixth year of being recognized as a Tree City USA. And our Arbor Day event is going to be, I think, bigger than ever, and some of that is due to the ash tree issue, where we'll provide a lot of education for people as well. So we'd encourage all residents to come out. We'll have music. It'll be a great event, and join us there. They can get more details on our city website under our events. And so we'll give them all times, location, what time the concerts are, and so forth.
And will you be giving out little trees again this year?
Yes, and also information on potential treatments of the ash and how we can reforest in advance of that.
Wonderful, that's important information. Thank you. Is there a motion for approval of the agenda and other items of business?
Move approval.
Second.
Any items to add?
Just, I've got one also.
Okay, and I have two. Okay. All in favor of the agenda as amended?
Aye.
Motion passes. Is there a motion for approval of the minutes from the council workshop held Tuesday, March twentieth, twenty eighteen?
Move approval. Second.
Any items to correct? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Is there a motion for approval of the minutes from the council meeting held that same date?
Move approval. Second.
Any corrections to those? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Consent calendar, if somebody want to make a motion.
Move approval.
Second.
Any items to pull for discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. We have one public hearing today that is regarding a code amendment for breweries and distilleries. Mr. Getcho.
Yes, that is correct, Mayor and City Council. We are bringing forth a code amendment to bring the uses breweries, distilleries, tap rooms, cocktail rooms into our zoning ordinance. We have definitions for all of these uses within our licensing portion of our ordinance, but as you know, we currently have a distillery in Eden Prairie. We have a tap room that is looking, at least the first one, that is looking to locate in Eden Prairie as well. And so we've had some discussion at the staff level and the city workshop level that we need to bring these uses into our zoning ordinance, and that's what we're doing tonight. Allowing these uses to be permitted within the commercial and industrial zoning districts within our community. So as you know, in addition to commercial industrial, we have residential districts. So obviously, there's the right place for these types of uses. And the Staff and Planning Commission, by unanimous vote, recommended approval of this ordinance and to place the proper definitions and the uses within Chapter eleven of the zoning code. I think, as you may note, within some of the planning commission discussion, there were some questions about parking, and we'll be monitoring that, because some of these uses can become quite popular, but we're monitoring that as well. But we do feel that these are the appropriate uses in the appropriate districts that we're bringing forward tonight.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Getcho? This is a public hearing. Is there anyone from the audience that wants to address the council on this issue? Okay, seeing none, is there a motion?
Sure, seeing none, I move to close the public hearing and approve first reading of the ordinance to amend City Code Section eleven point two, eleven point three, eleven point two-five, eleven point two-six, eleven point two-seven, eleven point two-eight, and eleven point three-zero, to include a definition for brewer, tap room, cocktail room, micro distillery, and small brewer, and to allow these uses as permitted uses in the commercial and industrial zoning district, and to establish parking requirements for these uses.
Before I second, just to make sure it's in the minutes right, eleven point zero-two and eleven point three, second.
Wait a minute, I'll follow you. What are you saying?
Oh, just you'd read eleven point two and eleven point three, but it's eleven point zero-two and eleven point, just so that the minutes got it correct.
Okay.
So second, sorry. Didn't mean to like trick anybody.
You know what?
Okay, all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Motion passes. Payman of Claims, is there a motion for approval?
Move approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any items to question? Roll call, please. Councilmember Aho?
Aye.
Councilmember Butcher-Wickstrom?
Aye.
Councilmember Case?
Aye.
Councilmember Nelson?
Aye.
Mayor Tara Lukens?
Aye.
The next item is the first reading of an ordinance amending the City Code, Chapter Nine, regulating the sales of cats and dogs at pet stores. Mr. Getcho.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. You may recall from a council meeting in March that the city was approached by the Humane Society of the United States and was asked to look into amending our City Code, Chapter Nine, and to regulate the sales of cats and dogs in pet stores based on some concerns that are out there regarding the sale of pets from breeding operations. So the council then directed staff to prepare an ordinance to bring forward, which we're doing tonight for a first reading. The Police Department played the lead role in putting that ordinance together with the assistance of the city attorney. So Sergeant Lonny Sopland with Eden Prairie Police Department is going to attorney. So Sergeant Lonnie Sopland with Eden Prairie Police Department is going to provide a brief overview of the ordinance, and then the city staff is here to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you.
Mayor, council members. Staff was asked by the city council to research a humane pet ordinance for the City of Eden Prairie. Research was done on mass breeding facilities. In the City of Roseville's humane pet ordinance and research was reviewed. The findings were that mass breeding facilities are typically inhumane commercial breeding facilities and disregard the health and well-being of the animals to turn a quick profit. Inhumane conditions in mass breeding facilities can lead to health and behavioral issues in the animals bred. Mass breeding facilities would thrive on pet store sales because pet stores could mask the animal's health or behavioral issues from the consumer and from the public. There are two pet stores in the City of Eden Prairie. We have Petco and PetSmart. In my research with these two stores, I found that neither of them sell cats or dogs from commercial breeding facilities. Both stores do host adoption events for dogs and cats from rescue organizations. There's no, and as of now, there's no current ordinance in Eden Prairie to prevent the sale of dogs or cats from commercial breeders. Rick Rosso drew up a draft humane pet ordinance, which is included in your council packet. I reviewed the draft and humane pet store ordinance with the store managers at Petco and PetSmart, and both managers agreed that the ordinance wouldn't affect their daily operations, so it would not affect them. So passing a humane pet store ordinance in the City of Eden Prairie would protect consumers from economic and emotional harm by purchasing sick or behavioral-harmed animals, encourage the public to adopt homeless animals, or seek out reputable breeders, and promote our city as a humane community. So I'm open to any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Any questions? I don't see anything. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
It does seem kind of odd to be developing an ordinance when we don't have any stores that are even selling pets that are commercially bred. But this is definitely part of a larger effort to draw statewide and even national attention to this issue, so something is done about this issue for, for good. Did you want to make a motion?
I would like to, but if you'd like to speak first, go ahead.
Oh, did you want to speak?
Yeah. I, I really just wanted to thank the National Humane Society for bringing this to our attention, and also the number of folks who have contacted us, because it really is an important issue. In our town, we're a very pet-friendly town in Eden Prairie, and I know this resonates with a lot of people. I've heard from a lot of people, and I can see we've got a number of people sitting in the council chamber tonight. But while I wanted to say that and thank you for bringing this to our attention, I also wanted to thank the really good business practices of businesses, the two businesses in our community, PetSmart and Petco, for having this really humane business model of not selling animals, but actually collaborating with organizations to adopt and bring adoptive animals into families' homes. It's really a win-win. It's a wonderful situation. So I would like, at some point, to actually recognize our businesses for taking on this really wonderful business model. So I hope we can do something in the future to recognize them. So it's all good. This is a really good ordinance, I think.
Thank you. Councilmember Case?
Yes. And if someone still wishes to speak, we can, after we second the motion or something. I just wanted to add too, for anyone listening in from home, or if the newspapers happen to pick this up, that this ordinance does not prevent the sale of pets from private homes, nor the, from anyone purchasing online an animal. We just really wish to join the movement that shuts down the pipeline going from puppy mills to pet stores into private homes. Also, rarely do we get this chance really to confront a problem like this that has seemingly a fairly easy solution that is also so clearly ethically and morally the right thing to do. So it is really with a lot of satisfaction that I get the chance to make this motion tonight. So I would move to approve the first reading of an ordinance amending City Code, Chapter 9, adding Section 9.75 relating to the regulation of sales of cats and dogs at pet stores.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. All right. Thank you. Appreciate, we really appreciate your involvement in this issue, and thank you for all the emails. We got a lot. All right. Reports of council members. Councilmember Nelson, did you want to go first?
Yes. What I was bringing in is there is becoming a larger and larger problem with coyotes in the community. And recently on Nextdoor, a story of a family with a young child where their poodle was dragged away by a pack. A lot of people are noticing, often individuals, but sometimes two or three coyotes in their backyards. And I'd sort of liked the, you know, we, we deal with deer problems. And I think it's time that we start looking at, you know, just how large a population we have. You know, nobody minds it when they eat mice outside.
Sure.
Or maybe a particularly pesky kind of squirrel or raccoon or something. But it's going beyond that. This is spring is coming, so the packs are going to get larger with new young animals. And I'm starting to wonder if maybe we have more than can be actively fed over a long winter period of time. And, you know, it'll probably take a little bit of time to figure this, but I think it's time that we do try to figure out exactly what we're dealing with. You know, you're, too many people are finding coyotes or hearing coyote noise once or twice a week.
Councilmember Nelson, I think it was the summer of 2016, the chief provided a report on the coyote situation in Eden Prairie. So we can certainly come back at a future meeting and, and look at updated trends, updated calls, and provide another report. And then you could possibly discuss what you want to do from there. The incident that you mentioned, the unfortunate incident, had occurred. The city police department and others, you know, have met with the particular person that was part of that incident. Very unfortunate, but we, we certainly can collect some more data and information and come back with an updated report.
That, you know, and obviously it would take the time to do, you know, so we actually figure something out. But, but taking into the effect that it's going to grow, assuming we ever get spring.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. Thank you for bringing that up. I had two things I wanted to talk about. One is just a reminder that April is the My Water Pledge month for the Wieland Foundation, which if you go to mywaterpledge.com on your computer, there's a little quiz that you can take that is, of course, non-binding. It's just asking you to pledge what you can do to help to create a more sustainable, a more environmentally friendly world. And it's not just questions that have to do with water usage. It's also energy usage and recycling. And just go there and make a pledge, and the more people from the city that get involved with this, we have an opportunity to win a car for a nonprofit, that we have to give to a nonprofit within our community. And responders as individuals have the opportunity to win up to $5,000 to pay for their utility bills. So it's kind of a great deal for everybody involved. The other thing I wanted to talk about is the only issue in the last probably five years that I've had more emails about than this pet ordinance has been net neutrality. I think I got 35 emails from people asking me to, as mayor, sign on to this petition for net neutrality, which I'm concerned about too, and I did sign on to it. But it's a big issue for a lot of people. And Kathy, I think, are you on the, what commission is it?
Cable Commission.
The Cable Commission.
Yeah, in fact, we're meeting next week.
That's right. You are meeting. So I hope that it's discussed at your meeting, and that maybe even the Cable Commission can come up with, the members of the Cable Commission can come up with maybe some kind of resolution or motion that all the councils encompassed by the Cable Commission can sign.
Can certainly bring it up and see what we can do.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Mr. Case, you had one item.
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. So clearly, across the country, especially of recent days after the Parkland shooting, but after every single shooting over the last several years, the need to have community conversations arises on the gun violence prevention. I'd like to suggest that the city council, doing the best to represent our residents, lead the way of getting involved in those conversations. And I, I have a few ideas I'd like to float tonight. I want to say first that we're going to hear in a little bit from our chief of, nope, not our chief of police. I got ideas when I chatted with you, but we're going to hear from our attorney later on. And we asked as a council that he would bring back just an overview on legally in the state of Minnesota with our specific statutory limitations on municipal government, what we are allowed to do and what we're not. I won't steal his thunder, but I think we're going to learn pretty quickly that our options are incredibly limited from a legal standpoint. But I would like to suggest that as a city council, there are a couple things that I think we can do and should be doing. One is that the mayor and I, and I'm not sure if anyone else, I know there's open meeting law pieces, but I think that we're meeting in the next couple weeks with the Shields leadership just to have a conversation and begin to express the concerns that we've been picking up from many of our residents, that having a store like Shields in our city, which, by the way, we all enthusiastically, as a council, approved within the last month, but they would be the only gun-selling store, to my knowledge. Now, I can stand to be corrected here, but in the seven-county metro area attached to a mall that would be selling assault-style rifles. So I know that guns are guns, and certainly people can bring guns into malls. It's, it's more the idea that we can't, as a country, I'm digressing a bit, but we can't, as a country, fix this problem. It's not probably, on some level, ever going to be fixed. But that knowledge, I don't think, should drive us to do nothing. I think it ought to drive us to do something. And so collectively, community by community across this country, if we look at doing something, then I believe as a collected group, we can maybe accomplish some change. It may be incremental, maybe significant. So that's one thing, is just meeting with Shields. I realize there's currently a store next to Menards that's selling assault-style rifles. I believe Gander Mountain is coming back into their site. We're not sure. At other Gander Mountain stores, they do sell assault-style rifles. So my suggestion would be to take it a little bit broader outside just Shields and have this council, and this is where I'm asking each of you, and you can weigh in tonight if you wish. I'd like to see us, not tonight, but have maybe a direction of staff to bring back to our next meeting, some type of wording on a resolution where we would take a stand and recommend a non-binding resolution, because we don't have the legality. We'll learn about that in a little bit. But a non-binding resolution where we would request that the stores within our borders that sell guns would not sell the assault-style rifle. And secondly, similar to Dickson Walmarts across the nation, they would join them in their model, that they would not sell to anyone under 21. I think that's minimal. I mean, I wish we could do so much more, but it's something. And I, so I guess I'll, I'll stop there for a moment. So my suggestion tonight would be that the five of us would direct staff to bring back a resolution that we would pass, and then send to our gun stores on behalf of our residents, asking them not to sell, voluntarily not to sell assault-style rifles, and to not sell guns to anyone under 21.
Thank you. Any comments?
What about assault rifle ammunition to go along with the guns themselves?
So one possibility, I'm open to anything. One possibility would be to have staff bring back options, and we can pick and choose. I mean, there, there are issues with the fact that an AR-15 and an AK-47 are simply, got to find the right wording here, they're, they're non-military varieties of military assault rifles. There's also the problem of the slippery, I sound a little bit like the other side, and I don't mean to be doing that. The slippery slope piece of how do you define this? There are hunting rifles that are M15 carbine 223s, which have wooden stocks. And they're, they're different, and yet they accomplish the same impact. So it is, it is complicated. But to my point again, that if we don't do something, if we don't take a stand where even requesting our stores in the city not to sell assault-style rifles will send a message that this is an important concern, that we want to continue to have that conversation. That's not the end of it. That's the beginning of it, if we could make that request, and then continuing to work with our gun-selling stores. So I agree with you. I mean, you look at, you look at the issues of both sides today across America coming together in, in communities and having these conversations. It's all the little pieces we have to do. We have to look at mental health. We have to look at the possibility of making our churches and our malls and our schools safer. And we have to look at, at clips and, and, what's the other word for clips? Magazines, thank you. I mean, the whole concept of, we're not going to ever get rid of mental health, but if we can make it more difficult to get a gun if you're in a crisis time. And then if you do get a gun, you don't get 50 bullets into a, you know, a magazine. And it's all of it, right? This is just a start. I'm just suggesting that we, we pass a resolution that asks our gun stores to work with us, and in essence, begin down that path. If you would not, if you'd voluntarily agree to not sell assault-style rifles, and I'm using my, my verbiage there carefully, and if you would agree to not sell to people below the age of 21.
Councilmember, Councilmember Butcher-Wickstrom?
Yes. I so appreciate Councilmember Case bringing this up to, for us to make some kind of movement in this area. I know that we all have our own perspectives about it. And I have to say that it's awfully difficult for me to argue with, when we're talking in terms of gun violence prevention, it would be very difficult to argue that selling rifles like AR-15, what is it, Armalite rifles, would be helpful in this area of, of gun violence prevention. So I absolutely agree with what you're suggesting. I think it's a really good idea. One thing I would like to say is that I also appreciate the timeline you're talking about, so that we will have time to talk to Shields and maybe other stores that sell guns, because there may be a situation where there are some things that we haven't even thought about that may be a benefit to an ordinance. So I really appreciate that this is just putting it out there for us to look at a potential resolution that we could pass, yeah, sorry, in the future, a resolution to pass in the future after we've had an opportunity to have a conversation. So I think that's very, very wise.
Councilmember Nelson?
Yes. And I'm very much for doing what we can legally with gun violence protection. I also want, whatever we do, to make it clear that we do support hunters, however, and, you know, the weapons that they use in hunting, you know, and, you know, anybody who's legally obtaining a handgun. But yet, there has been just too many, especially children, killed with, with gun violence, with these high mag resolution guns that are mostly military-style weapons that were not intended to be hunted with unless it's in an army situation. And we certainly don't want to be hunting human beings.
Thank you. I'm very much in favor of this, too. I think this is a great start, and hopefully, if enough cities like us can push back, maybe the legislature will pay attention and realize that this is something that indeed the majority of people in our state want. Brad, did you want to say anything?
I guess I would just say that, you know, I'm a hunter and an avid sportsman. I do own, I do own weapons, but I do not own an AR-15-style rifle. I guess I don't see a I guess I don't see a need for myself to have one, but I don't—I don't know that I want to get—go on the record to say that we should limit people's rights to what style of weapons they can purchase, because it really gets down to—like Councilmember Case alluded to—it's a slippery slope. Once you start saying, "Well, we're not going to allow this type of weapon, we're going to allow this type," it—and there's a lot of confusion about what types of weapons are out there, and people—many people have misconceptions about what weapons are and what they do and how they operate. And so, I guess I'm not in favor of doing that. I think we should let our state and federal regulators manage those issues, and if they come up with some regulation that goes against owning—ownership of that, then that's a different story. But as a city, we'll find out what our legal rights are, but I'm pretty certain that we don't have the right to regulate those. And if businesses want to choose to not sell those, I think that's certainly—you know, they're right. I know Dick's Sporting Goods has made a decision, as an organization, not to sell them, and, you know, that's all fine and good. If that's their choice, you know, that's great. But I don't think we have a right to push people and tell them what they can and can't sell.
Councilmember Case.
I shouldn't have used the word slippery slope. I knew when I said that that it was going to be misused by whatever—another perspective.
Well, when you look at ammunition, though—I mean, you know, there's ammunition, as you kind of alluded, that are used in AR-style weapons, but they're also used in hunting—you know, standard hunting rifles.
No, absolutely, it's very complex, and I completely—we completely agree on that. I just want to point out one thing regarding the slippery slope concept. We already have lines drawn. We don't allow grenade launchers to be sold and owned by private people. We don't allow automatic weaponry, and my fear—
Fully automatic.
Fully automatic, correct. And my fear, really, is that with technology exploding, if we don't begin to define the Second Amendment and put guardrails around it to say that it did not mean all weapons, because technology will allow laser guns that will fire and burn someone from the inside out within two seconds, and that—if we don't put a guardrail around what's a weapon and what's not, and what's allowable, and if we don't begin to do that now in our society—so, how is it to be done? Community by community by community. So I think—I think—we're on the right track, but—I would—I guess—I think we heard that at least there's a consensus that we would have staff bring back something, then we can chat more about it, Brad.
Yeah.
So at our next meeting, if some kind of resolution, Rick, can be brought back, and I think you heard our talks tonight, so—
Okay. Thank you. Okay, and that leads right into hearing from our city attorney about what we can legally and cannot do.
Thank you. Pull this up, if I can.
Just make sure the mic is up.
Yeah, hopefully your mic works.
Does my—can you hear me? Okay, so, how do we get this on the screen? That's me. What do we want?
There you go.
There we go. I've been asked a number of times by the city and other cities to address this issue. I take it very seriously. I addressed it Freedom Prairie back in 2013, City of Savage in 2016. I was asked just last week by the City of Savage to address how they deal with applications for transfer of guns. So, it's an area where I've spent some time looking at the laws. You have stolen some of my—I wouldn't call it thunder, but you've anticipated what I would say.
Emma.
But let's go through the basis for those conclusions, so—if we can—if I can get it to advance. Where do I point this?
Maybe use the keyboard to advance it.
Keyboard? Okay, all right. So, let's start at the beginning, the Second Amendment, right? We constructed in the office the whole presentation, and then I realized, well, we need to go back, and where does this all come from? So, "A well-regulated militia being necessary for the security of the state, the right of the people to keep and bear arms shall not be infringed." So that's the basis of all of the discussion around gun regulation, and it's within our Constitution. It's not a law that Congress passes, it's what our forefathers thought of. So what does state law provide? Minnesota state law provides that the legislature preamps all authority of a home-rule city or a statutory city to regulate firearms, ammunition, or their respective components. So, we are a statutory city, so this law governs us. State law preamps us, except a local government subdivision—that's us, a city—may regulate the discharge of firearms in their community, and we do that, and a government—and a city may adopt regulations that are identical to the state. Any local regulation that varies from that is void. Those are the exact words of the statute. In addition, under a separate section adopted a few years after that, the legislature said that a city may regulate by zoning—in very legalized terms, reasonable, nondiscriminatory, non-arbitrary—by zoning ordinance, the location of businesses where firearms are sold by a firearm dealer. So firearm dealer is a very defined term. You need a federal license to sell firearms. So to sell in Minnesota, you need a firearms license from the federal government. To buy a pistol or a semi-automatic military-style assault weapon, a person must apply for a transferee permit. However, no permit is required to purchase or transfer long-arm guns such as rifles and shotguns. So, what are some of the restrictions state law puts on? No one can own a machine gun, you know? We all have an image in our mind of what a machine gun is. I'm old enough, you know, the Elliot Ness, the Untouchables, the machine guns of those—of that era, or short-barreled shotguns. It doesn't say they're prohibited for sale, it makes it a crime to possess, so you can't possess—you have to possess it first to sell it. Makes it a crime to own it or to operate it. See, you're not allowed to do that. We also—in Minnesota—the legislature has decided that trigger activators that make—that are removable or manual power-driven, trigger activating device, those are also illegal. They allow a weapon to shoot at a rate higher and faster than it otherwise would. Now, there is some debate in Minnesota as to whether a bump stock is a trigger activator. Maybe all I need to say about that is that there is legislation pending that would clarify state law to say that a bump stock is a trigger activator. But when you read the definitions of them, it's not quite so clear. So, you know, I have no idea whether the legislation that's being proposed right now will pass, but it would help to clear up the confusion that currently exists. It was a bump stock that was used in the Las Vegas shootings in October. So I said earlier that the city regulates the discharge of weapons within the city. City Code 1 allows the discharge of firearm that's done in the lawful defense of a person, their property, or their family, or by law enforcement personnel. So I put that first on the list, it's last in the list in the code, and wanted to get that out there first, so that there's that basic right recognized by the city. And then, no person may fire or discharge a firearm without first securing a permit. So we're talking about firing it within the confines of the city, and permits are granted only for specific areas. And maybe as a prelude to something that you'll see in the future, we need to define those areas a little bit more carefully these days, because it hasn't been amended since a large portion of the city down by the river was farmland, woods, and hunting was allowed in those areas. It's—you know the names of the subdivisions that are now occupied by many homes in those areas, and so we're looking at defining the area to fit the circumstances where firearms can be discharged. So zoning regulations. This is an area where you do have some authority. The city can regulate, under state law, businesses' location, so where a firearms dealer may be located. It has to be a reasonable and nondiscriminatory and non-arbitrary. There have been two cases that have—in Minnesota—that have upheld zoning regulations of firearm dealers. Minneapolis and St. Paul both adopted different kinds of regulations. St. Paul had a thousand-foot setback from vulnerable facilities, places where large numbers of people would congregate, churches, also daycares, those kinds of facilities. Minneapolis had put a moratorium on any new facilities in the city, and that was challenged by an existing firearms dealer whose lease was up and had to relocate, and couldn't find a location that was available to his business within the city of Minneapolis. Both were challenged, and in both cases, the court upheld those regulations. So, similar to other kinds of ordinances that—whose intention is to protect people from uses that are not seen as compatible, there are normally setbacks from those particular uses, so from churches, daycares, schools. And the debate, then, is, well, what's a reasonable setback? Is it a 500 feet? Is it 1,000 feet? And then you have to look at the area—you have to really plot that out on a map, and I've done that for a different kind of ordinance, for a different city, where we came up with all those criteria that the council wanted to look at, and then plotted it out with circles on a map to see if there was any area left in the city where you could locate. And that's the issue. You smile, they laugh, but to the person who's excluded, that's an important issue. And so that's where the court talks about nondiscriminatory, non-arbitrary, and reasonable. It's not reasonable to create that map in a manner that excludes every possible location. You have to—there has to be someplace, and so if you get 2,000 feet from every park or school, there may not be a place where you could—you could locate. But you do have that authority under state law, and we have not, in this city, undertaken a review of that at this point. So, the other issue that I looked at in relationship to this was the Shields issue and the existing gun store, as well as Gander Mountain, soon-to-be Gander Outdoor, assuming that they would sell guns, and I thought there might be a question about, you know, what—is it that they can do? Are there any other regulations? And there is one other layer of regulation that is separate from the federal regulation and separate from city regulation, and that is how they secure their firearms. And so there are small-arm dealers and large-arm dealers. Small is they only have, in the store, 50 or less firearms at one time. They have to, at night, lock them up with a steel rod, put them in a safe, some situation like that, and have electronic security. The large firearm dealers who have more than 50 have to do more than that. They have to have vehicle-resistant barriers that prevent penetration of the building where there is more than a 50-foot run. So, get a car, a vehicle 50 feet away, drives in to the wall in order to steal the guns—I think that's the purpose of the legislation—that it has to be a vehicle-resistant barrier. And so, we spent a little time at my office, looking at the locations where we have them to determine that they are compliant. This is a rendering, not an actual picture of the Shields building, although before I got the rendering, I had their Saint Cloud and their Rochester pictures in the slideshow, and there they had the bollards in front of the areas where there was glass and entrances to protect it, in both of those. And so, I wanted to be able to demonstrate to you tonight that the Shields store here in Eden Prairie would have something similar, and it's hard to see from this, but on the right-hand side of—to the left of where it says Shields, and down below on the sidewalk, there looks like there's a column—that is a concrete bollard that would prevent a car from coming in the doorway, because the doors are on the two sides of that front facade. And so there is a bollard on that side. You can see it better in this one, where there's people walking towards that concrete pillar, and that is the bollard that would prevent a car from coming in that. And then in the front—if you look at the very front, which is not a door, but is a window wall—behind the shrubbery, up against the wheels, there is—now we get technical, and I'm out of my wheelhouse, talking about engineering details—but this is a rendering of the footings and the barrier that is three feet high below the windows that would be the vehicle-resistant barrier. So, we are compliant there, and that will be checked as it's built. Gander Mountain, you'll see the—I mean, you have bollards in front there, and then at the Arnsen's shop, you can see the bollards more clearly on the side, where there are windows where it says guns, but also you can see several of the bollards in the entryway to the front door. So, those appear to me to also be compliant. We heard a little bit tonight about Deerfield, and I'd like to tell you what I know about Deerfield. In 2013, the state of Illinois adopted a statute that used words similar to Minnesota statute that preamps all local regulation of firearms, and that anything that was not consistent with the state's regulation was not valid. And they did something a little curious. They gave cities 10 days after adoption of that statute to adopt their own local regulations that would be grandfathered in. 10 days, statute gets passed—you know, in Minnesota, most statutes are effective August 1, so councils there had 10 days to adopt their local regulations. Deerfield did that. They adopted local regulations that addressed storage and possession, carrying, and transportation. Did not address banning the sale of any type of weapon. They came back in 2018. Not surprisingly, it was a community that took some action in 2013. They came back in 2018 on April 2, and amended their ordinance to ban the assault-style semi-automatic weapons. They are now being challenged in court that the amendment is not grandfathered in as the original passage of the law. Now, another community in Illinois did the same thing as Deerfield in 2013, enacted local regulations. That was challenged in federal court, and the city prevailed. Here we have a different case. Deerfield enacted a rather mild regulation in terms of possession and carrying and transportation, now ramped it up just two weeks ago to prohibit the sale of certain types of weapons, and calling it an amendment. And we will see whether a court agrees that that amendment is grandfathered in, or whether they had to have everything they wanted to have 10 days after adoption in 2013. So, in case there were questions about what are the pro— So in case there were questions about what are the prohibitions on possession, I have the list of prohibitions on possession, who cannot possess. You're not talking about doing that kind of action by Mr. Case's proposed action for the council, but we have that there, just in case there were questions. I'd stand open to any of your questions now.
Okay, council, any questions for Mr. Russell?
Very thorough. Thank you for the presentation, it's very good.
All right, thank you.
Yes, Mr. Case.
Yeah, so the, if I heard you right, the only potential action we might have going forward would be zoning, but I'm assuming any current zoned area would be grandfathered in if one were to, I'm not suggesting this, but if one were to happen to enact, I'll just take the gun store next to Menards and say that that violated some 500-foot rule of something we came up with, that particular store would be grandfathered in under that new ordinance, is that correct?
That's correct. It would be like any rezoning that you do, the existing uses can stay, they can rebuild, they can maintain their property, all they can't do is expand the non-conforming use.
Right, okay, thank you, that's all I had, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you very much for that presentation. Mr. Gatto, so you'll get us an ordinance, a proposed-
I will not.
A resolution.
I will, yeah.
Proposed resolution, I'm sorry, I said ordinance, I didn't mean that.
Right, yes.
A resolution for next meeting. And then do we also have on the agenda for next meeting, the zoning restrictions?
The, any discussion of distance requirements, is that what you're referring to, Mr. Rosso brought up? That's something that you discussed, you know, in addition, other uses, in addition to gun uses, pawn uses, adult uses, that's currently being studied, and that would actually next go to the Planning Commission. And then they could discuss that and do as Mr. Rosso said, look at different maps and iterations of different possible 500,000-foot rule impacts in Eden Prairie, and then that would probably come back, most likely probably at a city workshop for discussion in the next month or two.
Okay, all right, thank you. So passing it sometime this summer would be likely?
I believe so.
I was just going to suggest if we could speed that process, only because I do feel, granted, we can't do anything about the three that are here, but I feel like that's an urgent need.
Sure, yes, thank you.
Thank you. Anything else to bring before the council?
No.
If not, is there a motion for adjournment?
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.
Oh, man.